Okay, I'm gonna call and order the Thursday, October 18, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. Could we please stand for the pledge? Mr. Crowley, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can I please have a moment of silence for those serving our country, both at home and abroad? Thank you. It was good to hear those loud voices over there on the pledge. Well done, girls. First up tonight is announcements. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you very much. I will be filling in for Kathy on the Parks and Rec announcement. She had a death in the family, so she's not able to join us this evening. So, I'll do my best. Due to unforeseen circumstances, the Friends of Warminster Parks Casino Night has been postponed to Saturday, March 23, 2019 at Ann's Choice. We will continue to sell tickets and accept sponsorships throughout the next five months. Thirty-five-dollar tickets will include a beef and beer, fifty dollars in chips, gaming raffles, gaming table raffles, and silent auction items. New this year, the opportunity to bid on some once-in-a-lifetime trips to such places as the California Wine Country, Alaskan Cruise, photo safari in Africa, and more. Tickets are available at www.FriendsOfWarminsterParks.org, and you just click on the Events tab. Join us for Craven Hall and John Fitch Museum Tour. That's Monday, October 22, at 6:30 p.m. Fees are $10. Must pre-register by calling (215) 443-5428 or online. Space is still available for youth ages 11 to 15 for the American Red Cross Babysitting Clinic on Saturday, October 27, from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Fee is $65 per person. The Red Cross Babysitters class gives youths access to the latest information on childcare, offers tips, and can answer all your questions so that you're ready to start your own babysitting business using lecture and class activities. And you must pre-register, as class size is limited. The Zentagel Workshop will be held on Thursday, November 15, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the rec. Fees $35 a class. Essentially what that is, it's a fun way to create beautiful images by drawing structured patterns. Again, pre-register is required. There's an introduction to acting for adults. Will be held at the rec on Tuesday, October 30 through December 18, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at $75 per session. This program will cover the basic principles of acting, including character development, scene study, and monologue preparation. Don't miss out on the crafts programs with Ms. Kathy. Kids' one-day workshop for ages 3 to 6 is once a month, Tuesdays, November 13, December 11, January 8, and February 12, and that's from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. That's $12 per class. There's also munchkin time for preschoolers, that's age 2 and 3, with an adult helper. Once a month, that's Wednesdays, November 13, December 12, January 9, February 13, and that's from 10 to 11 a.m., and that's $9 per class. Only a few tickets are left for the annual trip to the Radio City Christmas Spectacular on November 17. Tickets to the second Mezzanine and Motor Coach Transportation are provided. There's also a free time to spend in New York City after the show to eat, shop, and sightsee. Discount tickets are still available at the Parks and Recreation for Regal Movie Theaters as well as the Zoo, Camden Aquarium. I just gotta stop on that one note. I mean, if anybody goes to see any movie at any point in time, I mean, it's really worth going there and getting your tickets. I've done it before in my past. If you go to see four movies a year, just buy your tickets in advance. You're gonna save the money. Price lists are available online. Tickets are sold Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. at the Parks and Rec office in the Warminster Community Park. Check online for ticket prices or call the office. For more information or to register, call Parks and Recreation at (215) 443-5428, or visit the township website at www.WarminsterTownship.org/specialevents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Mr. McPhillips?
Kathy would be proud.
Thank you very much.
All done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first announcement is to remind you, if you have any unwanted or expired prescription medications, you can safely get rid of them over at the Warminster Police Department. It's the green box at the top of the steps. And if you're following the news, you can see that this opioid crisis is not going anywhere, and the best thing that you can do is to get rid of your unwanted or expired prescription medication. So, please tell your family, tell your friends, they can head over to the Warminster Police Department to get rid of them. My second announcement isn't much as an announcement as a comment, Mr. Chairman, and it's about Meadowwood Apartments, particularly the Roger Road behind Meadowwood Apartments, the curve, and there's a number of cars that are parked behind there. And I know, Mr. Schuster, you've been working on this.
Damn.
It's, is it, may I excuse me?
Somebody's blowing up.
Okay. Anyway, the Roger Road behind Meadowwood Apartments, there's a number of cars parked back there, and I know there's a question whether they live there or not. Drove by there today before the meeting, tonight before the meeting, and there's a guy carrying his laundry. If there's something we can do about that, that'd be greatly appreciated. It seems like they're using it as their personal driveway, which is fine, but to me, it seems like there's a hazard. There's also a box truck parked back there right now. So, if there's anything we can do about the parking situation behind Meadowwood Apartments, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Wanna comment on that now, or you wanna?
Absolutely. You know, we've been working on that, especially Amanda. It's a little bit of a tricky situation. We don't have all the details. First of all, as a public road, people have the right to park on that unless, of course, you take the action to do a traffic study and then ban parking by ordinance, in which case the police can enforce that. The last communications that Amanda had, and correct me if I'm wrong, indicates that they do allow free parking, because I know there was some concern that they thought people thought they had been charging for parking, which is why people were going to the street. It seems that that's not the case. There may be limits in the amount of passes that they are giving out, so guests may be forced out on the street. So, we're still continuing to look at that, and we'll keep you updated and keep looking at options. I know with the fact that it's not a straight road, it does create certain issues. We're just trying to figure out a way that would actually solve the problem, rather than just push it to some other road or create some other issue. So, we're aware and we continue to work on it.
Great, thank you. It's, I don't think they're guests, from looking at it night after night. They're staying awfully long time if they are guests.
Yeah, and, you know, it's one of the discussions we'll have, you know, with staff and our professionals. They should be providing adequate parking as part of that condo for both residents and guests. If that's not occurring, there may be some legal recourse, but of course, have to talk to our solicitor about that and see what we could enforce.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. All right, Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanna quickly welcome to town three new businesses this month. Vista Insurance at 622 Mary Street, Astro Printing Services at 82 Lewis Drive, and Gallo Tropical Dominican and Mexican Cuisine is located at 12115 Centennial Station. Thank you for choosing to call Warminster Home, and we wish them all the best. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's all? Okay. I just have a couple of announcements. I wanted to pass along condolences to the Frescatore family on behalf of the board and township staff and administration. Kathy's brother, Steve, passed on, and it was unexpected, so we really wanna send our condolences along to Kathy and all as well. I also just wanted to remind everyone again, I usually don't wear the same tie twice in a month, but I did because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I just wanna remind all you gals out there to go schedule your screenings before the holidays. It's a good time to go get your mammograms. And starting in November is Movember, which is Men's Health Awareness Month, which I'll be pushing in November. Being a colon cancer survivor myself, I really feel strongly about people getting their screenings. These are diseases, and if they're caught early, I'm living proof that you can live a perfectly healthy life. So, please go out and get your screenings. It's a good time before the holidays to do it. So, they're the only announcements I have, and I'm gonna move forward to presentations. I'm gonna ask Matt Penji from the Warminster Historical Society to come up. I have a proclamation for him and his group to present. Bring the family up with you, Matt. Please do.
This is Heather with the Warminster Library.
Matt, we got to talk at great length last Sunday at an event we were at, and you know how much we appreciate all you're doing here to promote the history of Warminster Township. You know, it's good to see young people stepping up to do it. So, you'll be here for a good long time.
Yeah.
Good long time pushing it all township. So, I just have a proclamation I wanna read and present to you and the society on behalf of the board. "We, the Board of Supervisors of Warminster Township Bucks County, Pennsylvania, are privileged to recognize and celebrate the rich history of the Warminster Township and formally established, of the Warminster Township formally established in 1711. Warminster Township has endured and prospered over its more than 300 years of history. Whereas, the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors recognizes the importance of preserving and passing along the history of this town we call home. Now, be it resolved that this, the 18th day of October 2018, we, the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors and the entire Warminster community, recognize October 27, 2018, as Warminster History Day." And I'd like to continue to do this on an annual basis.
Yeah, definitely.
So, that proclamation is for you and the society?
Thank you.
Please let us know anything we can do to help.
Thank you.
And Matt, why don't you?
Yes, definitely.
Tell us what you have coming up, what events you have coming up.
Yeah, no problem. Heather, I wanna thank you for allowing us to hold it and joining forces with having Warminster History Day.
And tell us who Heather is.
Heather, I'm sorry, yes. Heather is, she's one of the workers over at the Warminster Library. She takes care of a lot of the things that happen in there, a lot of the events, a lot of the daily routines that happen over at the library. So, she's one of the big forces over at the library. For Warminster History Day, it's coming up on October 27, 11 to 3. We'll have all the historical societies over there, Craven Hall, Cold War Society, Johnsville, William Tenet House, and we look forward to everybody coming out. We also will have a documentary that we're creating, and the documentary will be Growing Up in Warminster. So, we invite everybody to come out, kinda say, you know, a story for about five minutes of what your kinda upbringing in Warminster, what brought you to Warminster, and what you like about Warminster. So, we invite everybody to come out.
Awesome.
All right?
That's excellent, Matt. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I was gonna say we have a December 19. We're gonna be gift wrapping.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, on December 19, starting at 2:00 p.m. at the Warminster Library, we'll be having a gift wrapping event. So, we're inviting everybody to bring your gifts, and we'll wrap them for you for a donation, and we'll have more details coming out in the next month. And just keep an eye out on our Facebook page, Warminster Historical Society, our website, warminsterhistory.org, and, you know, we'll keep you informed. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Matt. Thank you, and...
Thank you, George.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for a brief recess, 'cause Matt would like to take a couple pictures with the group and with the family. So, that would be great. Just a five-minute recess, Ed. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, bud. Okay, we're gonna resume our meeting, the October 18 meeting. Next up on tonight's agenda is land use, public hearings, and ordinances, and this is consider authorization to advertise ordinance approving collection procedures for delinquent real estate and municipal claims. And I'm gonna give this to Mr. Schuster to go over, 'cause there's a couple of actions we have to take here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little bit of history before we get into this matter. Prior to 2018, the Tax Claim Bureau of the county collected all of our delinquent taxes, as well as any delinquent fees, from trash and streetlights. Around 2017, they had discovered that they actually do not have the legal authority to collect the fees, the streetlight and the trash fees, the delinquent fees, I should say, when they informed us that they're no longer gonna collect them on our behalf. This is legally correct, so we had to go ahead and make some changes. This year, we've turned over collections of our delinquent fees, our trash, and our streetlights to our solicitor. They've issued letters, they've issued liens, so they're in the process of doing that. As we were researching alternative methods, we came across a law firm called Portnoy, which specializes in this activity. What Portnoy does, and they can do it for your fees and/or your delinquent taxes, they will go ahead and do the whole collection process from soup to nuts, and also do it with very minimal fees laid out by the township. All the fees that are associated with this is pretty much collected through the lien process or through the collections process. So, it gets put on the delinquent taxpayer or the delinquent fee payer. What we're asking tonight is to authorize us to move forward with this process. Portnoy works with multiple municipalities. We've had them in here for several meetings, both with staff and chairman as well. They are in conversations right now with the school district. I believe the school district is gonna move forward with that, and that's a future action item for them, but they haven't formally taken any action as of yet. So, the actions that we're requesting tonight is, one, approving the advertisement of the ordinance, which allows us to go ahead and switch from the Tax Claim Bureau to Portnoy for the delinquent taxes, as well as use Portnoy for the delinquent fees. The second action would be the agreement with Portnoy, which I would ask you approve conditionally upon the adoption of the ordinance, which would be scheduled for your next regular meeting. And finally, a resolution, also adopted conditionally upon adoption of the ordinance, directing the Tax Claim Bureau not to collect delinquent fees, I'm sorry, delinquent real estate taxes on our behalf.
Okay. So, the first action we wanna take is to consider authorization to advertise the ordinance approving collection procedures for delinquent real estate taxes and municipal claims.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
No.
Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, is there any discussion from the board?
I do have one thing. So, my understanding is that the tax collector has some reservations pertaining to this, and I know that she's not in the area. She's at a conference, I believe. Is there any way that we can table this item until our next meeting for her to be able to come in and address some of her concerns?
Well, you can do a couple things. One, you can table it. By the way, I don't know of any reservations. None's been, you know...
Nor myself.
You can, if you were to still advertise it, that doesn't mean it's a done deal.
Yeah, we don't, this is just authorization to advertise.
Do you have any idea what the reservations are?
Not.
I don't, this is the first I'm hearing.
I do not. I know that this was an item that she had reservations with.
Okay.
And she's unable to be here, 'cause she's at a tax collector conference, I believe, or some conference. It's not...
So, yeah, those are the options. You can table it, or you can just go ahead and authorize the advertisement, but that in and of itself doesn't commit you to anything. It allows you to take action at your next meeting.
I think we should move forward and authorize the advertisement, and the tax collector's free to come in before we vote on any permanent action, 'cause we kinda wanna get this in place before the end of the year if we're going to do this.
Correct, 'cause we would wanna January 1 start.
And I have to tell you, I met with this company, this firm, along with Greg, and they have an extensive client list that's very reputable. They're very reputable. They'd be glad to come in and do a presentation for the public. I mean, we didn't feel the need for them to be here tonight, or I would've asked them to come in.
Okay.
And this is an agency that'll do these collections with no money out of our pocket. And it's not a ton of money either that we're talking about here, 'cause we have a very good tax collector.
What's the length of the approval process?
So, it's just two meetings. So, you would advertise it today, and then if you approve conditionally the agreement and the resolution, the only action you have to take left, left to take is at the November meeting, which you adopt the ordinance. At that point, it's complete.
Okay. So, we, but we have two meetings in order to be able to do that prior to January. So, I mean, I would still recommend holding off for her to be able to come in and say her piece. I mean, she's a township tax collector. Taxes is in her title. It's in this title, I think, that we should hear from her.
It's up to the board, however you wanna do it. Like I said, you could table it, or you could just advertise it, which still gives you the option to go either way.
I think we should advertise it, and if the tax collector comes in and has real concerns that strike all of us to say, wait a minute, we can always vote and all we need is the option of the ordinance.
When I look at, I think of the steps we're taking here, I think the one that would give me more pause would be the conditional agreement, more so than the advertisement, 'cause I understand what Mr. Monroe's saying, and I would like to hear from Mrs. Loftus, if the opportunity presents itself. However, if we advertise, we're just advertising.
Correct.
But the third item that you mentioned, making, accepting the agreement conditionally upon the ordinance's approval, is that something we can not consider tonight?
Absolutely. It really makes no difference whether you do those actions tonight.
Why don't we just consider, why don't we just consider the advertisement tonight, and we can table the other two items?
That's fine. I think that would...
That puts, other than the advertisement, that puts the brakes on everything until we hear from Mrs. Loftus.
Either way, it's the same result, so it doesn't...
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I think it's a matter of appearances as much as anything.
That's fine.
Granted, conditional approval may send the wrong message.
Okay.
That we don't value that opinion.
All right. Means are any comment from the public before the board takes action? Be glad to hear it. Okay. Well, I'm gonna call a question then. All in favor?
Aye.
Right in the chair votes aye opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Monroe's a no, it's carries three to one. And then, I'm gonna table the next two items.
Okay.
So, is there a motion to table item aye and double aye?
No.
Mr. McPhillips is our second.
I'll say.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion? I think we already had the discussion.
Got discussion.
Any from the public?
No.
Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, we'll table those two items. We'll advertise, and then would you reach out to Mrs. Loftus? I know, I guess she's away for the weekend on a conference Monday.
Absolutely. And also, perhaps she'd prepare a report for us, and she's...
Well, I'll put her on the next agenda.
Well, this'll be on the agenda as an action item for both adoption and for the other two items that you tabled. I'll invite the tax collector to come out. I'll also invite Portnoy to come out, so he can answer any of your questions.
Okay, that would be great.
Can I ask a procedural question? If, so we advertise the ordinance, and, you know, thirty days passes, we have the next meeting. Comes back, Mrs. Loftus or any member of the public has comments that we then wanna change the ordinance, we then have to re-advertise it if we make changes to it?
That's a question for you, yeah.
Yeah, if you make substantive changes to the ordinance, you will definitely need to re-advertise.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're not doing any harm by advertising, other than if things, if we still wanna move forward with it, we don't waste thirty days.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna move on now to public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items, subject to a five-minute guideline as recognized by the chair. Public comment, please. Take your time, Pat.
Hi, Pat Boyle, 409 Grand Avenue, Warminster Clinic. Dug up where the sidewalk's gonna be at the end of August, beginning of September, and filled it with stone, and it's still filled with stone. And there's like this thing that I've heard over the course of my career, that you don't lay macadam between Halloween and St. Patty's Day. Now, they may be better macadam now, but they wanna put down a macadam trail. They've got a week left to go.
Correct. It's all about...
It's really, I mean, that's a nice timeframe, but it's really regarding the temperature.
Well, it's getting close to freezing tonight.
Yeah, and it has to be, there's state requirements. We follow PennDOT standards, so they enforce that. It's, until the plant's shut down, people are paving, but there's other construction methods to take care of that. They can put blankets on it, there's certain things. It depends when it's, there's certain criteria when the temperature's rising, they can still pave. It may drop down at night, but then there's methods to do that.
There's another two months that people can't walk on the sidewalk that's not there. We just went through another two months of not having sidewalks, and it looks like nothing's being done, so...
Amanda's whispering in my ear, and I don't have their construction schedule, but it sounds like they're working in the next couple of days.
Yeah, I see, I've seen what you're talking about, Pat. I live in the neighborhood, too.
Yes, I know, yes.
I see it every day, too.
Yes. I hear it every day.
Unfortunately, and this is always the tough part, we, staff all agrees, I, there's no, I have zero control to tell them to do it. I don't run the construction.
Oh, I understand that, but sometimes a question for you...
And if it becomes a safety issue, then that's when we jump in, and my guys are usually on top of that.
Well, I just got a question yesterday, is that the snow and ice are coming, and if it's still gonna be stone, that's gonna be really difficult to walk on.
I think they said it'll be... Their work, I mean, I think the temperature'll be fine. I mean, it has to stay down and freezing for days for them.
I understand that, but I'm getting stopped every time I go out of my house, so it'd be nice if it's fixed.
All right. Okay, so Amanda's saying they're actually paving tomorrow.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
I'm not saying they're gonna be complete, but...
That's what they're saying. Okay, so we'll check it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other public comment? Sure, please.
Hello. Heather Lipinski, Adult Services Librarian at the library. I just wanted to let the Board of Supervisors know and the community know of a vital workshop that we're gonna be having coming up. It's a suicide prevention training, and it will be on Tuesday, November 13, at 6:00 p.m. at the library, and it's gonna be run by the Bucks County Suicide Prevention Task Force. They are gonna show people what to look for to recognize different symptoms of suicide, suicidal tendencies, things like that, and they're gonna, the workshop will teach people basic skills on how to react to people around them in the community that might have those suicidal thoughts or similar actions. So, I would encourage the Board of Supervisors, anyone at the township, anyone in the community to come. It's a free training. It's two hours, so once again, that's Tuesday, November 13, from 6 to 8 p.m.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sure, please.
How you doing?
Good.
Gene Astorito, 77 Primrose Drive. Mine is really more of a question. I'm not sure. Did we buy Shenandoah Woods? Can anybody, like, condense that so we can kinda understand what's going on there? I really don't understand at all.
Sure. At the moment, we have an executed purchase and sale agreement with the Navy over that property for $1 million. We have given $100,000 as a down payment. The Board of Supervisors has not authorized the closing on that property as of yet.
Okay, so we can still, like, back out of that if we wanted to, or if you guys choose to?
They, it's a, it's not a yes or no answer. We have given a deposit, which means if we back out, we could lose that deposit. It could be a case where the Navy files an action to force us to move forward with the closing. So, I can't give a yes or no answer, but there is the potential of backing out, yes.
Okay, is there a timeline that we have to meet?
I don't believe that there's a timeline specified in the purchase and sale agreement. However, at some point, I imagine the Navy is going to request that we make a decision.
And just so we know, that this is all done through the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority. If they make the purchase, it's a pass-through agency that they handle the purchase and all that, and we fund them.
Okay, and then it becomes our property?
Absolutely, yes.
And we can't sell any of it or do anything with it?
Under the terms of the agreement, and the reason why the Navy was willing to lower the price substantially from previous discussions that were going on with developers, is because the terms of the agreement would be that we would take it on as open and recreational space, not for development, not for resale.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we'll be updating as things go along. We basically, honestly, we've been in a holding pattern. We're waiting for the Navy to say, hey, we're ready to close, or...
And you'll have a meeting on that before you...
Oh, sure. We've been talking about it for a couple of years, this, the purchase.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, please, Ed.
Ed Hoffman, 801 West Canyon Lane Road. So, I'm gonna go a little bit on what Gene was saying. So, I have a question. Since we are moving or trying to move forward to purchase Shenandoah Woods, who's gonna be responsible to clean it, clean it up?
So, the township would be responsible, what do you mean by cleaning up? There's...
Well, you know those buildings have asbestos, there's stuff underground, there's stuff all over the place around there.
Yeah, the environment...
So, I mean, it's an environmental hazard over there.
No, it's not.
No, really? It's been tested. Everybody sees that.
Yes, if you'd like, we can give you the findings of suitable transfer that was done by the Navy. We also did our own environmental testing, so it's a relatively clean piece of property. The only issue it has primarily is groundwater contamination with PFO and PFOS, which is not much different than a lot of other properties around.
Which is part of the largest suit that's been going on with the water.
That's correct, yes.
Correct. So, we become responsible to clean up what the Navy abandoned?
Well, again, there's nothing to clean up.
Well, who's gonna knock all the properties down? Who's gonna move all that stuff out?
Okay, so, correct.
So, those are things that have to be considered here, because that's gonna put us, we're gonna end up having to pay for that, right?
Yes, that is factored into the project, that we would have to go ahead and do some reclamation. We would have to remove some of the structures, some of the roads, some of the pipes that are in the ground. Yes, that is anticipated as part of the project.
And has that have been anticipated as far as the cost and what it's going to cost the residents to do this?
Yes, the town, the board has authorized a $7 million drawdown note for the development of Warminster Community Park for short-term financing, as well as the purchase and the reclamation of Shenandoah Woods, should they move forward with that project. So, yes, we've anticipated that financially.
So, how is the township getting that funding, I guess I would ask, because the township has problems now, so, I mean, so what are we gonna do, raise our taxes to do this, though?
It would have to come from taxpayers, yes.
Okay, so when will these other meetings be continued? Okay, so when will these other meetings be continued?
Uh, when the Board wishes to move forward.
Okay. Any anticipation as to when?
Not really.
No?
No.
Okay.
No, honestly, not really. We have nothing on, on the radar screen for closing on that property right now. But, um, as far as, as far as, now I don't want to get into a long discussion of contamination, but the Navy has deemed that property suitable for transfer. We spent a hundred and thirty thousand.
Somewhere in that neighborhood, yeah.
To do independent testing, which the reports are available to the public. Anyone that would like to copy the report, it's available. That, that our independent people have deemed it suitable for transfer as well. And we took that precaution because of just that, hey, we're not, if it's a contaminated property, you're responsible for it. Well, it's, in their eyes and ours, it's not contaminated.
I'd like to say, uh, one quick thing.
Certainly.
So you and I, we share a couple of, uh, views. So number one is concern about, uh, the contamination of the property.
Correct.
I completely agree with you. I also, uh, I also believe that we shouldn't be paying for it, all right? That we should not be held accountable, that the Navy were the ones that contaminated and so on and so forth. So we completely agree with that. My issue comes down to whose responsibility is it to make sure that no children are, are raised on that property, that we don't hear about a cancer cluster there thirty years, forty years from now?
Correct.
Whether I'm sixty, seventy, or eighty, or ninety years old, it doesn't matter what it is. So what is that worth? That's what I, as a supervisor, if the buck stops here, um, but I agree with you.
Absolutely.
I, I want the Navy to pay for it.
I think they should be responsible. They're the ones who pulled out, and they left it abandoned. I mean, and now we're responsible to pay for it? I don't think it's right for us. I mean, put the burden on the people of Warminster Township, it's, it's not fair.
Right.
You know, we are all in favor to having land, okay, for open, open areas for the kids to play, but when do we say enough is enough, and when does it become their responsibility, not ours?
So on that point, so one of the predicaments that we were put into, all five of us, uh, sometime, uh, time flies, I don't remember how long ago it was.
It's going on two years ago. It'll be two years in April that they.
I mean, it was, it was, you know, our backs were up against the wall, and it was one of those things where it was, you either agreed to this price, which was significantly lower than what was debated before, uh, or it's gonna be developed. I mean, that's basically what it was, and that issue about future families and children.
Absolutely.
That's where it was put on us, and we were put into a very tight position. Has there been any legal change? I remember reading about a legal change with respect to, uh, uh, I guess the ability, uh, from a legal perspective in dealing with the, the military. Is that, has there been any change in the law with respect to that recently?
Uh, I'm not aware of any, Brian, that, uh, that affects this particular project. I will say this, and, and I'll take another look at it, uh, as we get closer, because I did read all the documents when I became solicitor, uh, here. There, there is some, uh, language in the agreements that says that the Navy is responsible for, uh, anything that was created before the baseline that, uh, that you guys have, uh, have determined with respect to the environmental cleanup. In other words, if there was something that exists there and was missed in that by their representations, that they would be responsible for that, and anything new that you did to the property would be on you. But I'll, I'll pull the, uh, the section of that as we, you know, as we get closer to the, uh, to the time when it'll matter, because they're really, we're not really in, in the point now.
You know, also in retrospect, the businesses that have opened up in this area throughout that airbase, okay, their pockets are deep. They're able to handle that. Ours are not, okay? And I think that's.
And, and one other point I'd like to make is this issue has been debated since, I've been on the Board seven years now, longer than two years before prior to my entrance to this Board, and we've spent an astronomical amount of money on legal fees, back and forth, back and forth. And it's another factor that came into all of our minds, that, look, we need to, we need to be done with this. I mean, at one point, we were paying a solicit, two solicitors, and an environmental attorney, I mean, to the tune of eight, nine hundred dollars an hour.
I hear you.
I mean, we were paying that. We have to put an end to this. It, it, or just continue on and on. But I don't disagree. I think they should give it to us, but I can't, we can't make them give it to us.
And they should be responsible for the removal of all the, all the contaminants and everything else. Like I said, I'm part of that big lawsuit for the water right now. I'm, I'm into that. So, you know, it's why I'm bringing this all up.
Okay.
All right, appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Schuster, there's one I'd like you to explain, one we talked about.
Okay.
Prior to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Consent agenda for this evening. Item A is the minutes for your September twentieth meeting. Item B is the minutes for your October fourth, uh, meeting slash budget workshop. Item C is Resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirty-nine, the allocation of the foreign fire insurance taxes. This is the annual pass-through that we get, uh, that we distribute to the fire companies. Item D is authorization to re-advertise the golf course bar renovation project. Uh, you previously authorized this. We went through the process. No bids were received. Uh, we believe, uh, it might be a timing issue, uh, now that some of the, the weather's starting to change. We believe that some, uh, some contractors might be more available based on what we're hearing, so we're asking the authorization to rebid. Uh, the specs are still the same. Item E is award of bid two thousand eighteen dash zero seven. That's the articulating loader. This is a bid you had previously advertise, authorized advertisement for. Uh, we did receive a single bid, which is within the budget. Item F is the natural, or the natural gas contract. Uh, when we do these energy contracts, whether it be gas or electricity, uh, we typically do them the day of the Board meeting, 'cause they have a very short, uh, window for you to go and accept it. This bid was done, conducted today. Uh, six bids were received. Uh, the winning bid is ten cents less per unit than we're paying now, so we anticipate saving approximately twenty percent off of what we're, uh, paying right now. Uh, the paperwork for that is, uh, at your table. Item G is approval of the Crown Castle Right-of-Way Agreement. Uh, this is, and this is the one that wanted a little additional explanation.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think you're.
Is that better?
There you go.
Okay. The Crown Castle Right-of-Way Agreement, this is for existing equipment, uh, that's in our right-of-way. I believe that there are, is it eleven pieces of equipment? So, so there, there's a variety of pieces of equipment that is already existing in our right-of-way. This agreement spells out the rights and responsibilities, who's responsible for what. Uh, it gives us a, a good deal of protection, um, and it's a pretty standard kind of agreement for, for this type of activity. It also provides payments to us every single year. I believe it's seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, per year. Is any other?
That's not future.
That is correct. This has no impact on their future ability, uh, to put, uh, additional equipment in. That would have to go through our own internal processes and/or whatever is, is going on with the state and whatever changes may occur, uh, through legislation. Uh, item H is release number four, the final from the escrow account for Pierce Aluminum, uh, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, as recommended by the engineer. And item I is release number four from escrow for Home to Suites in the amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents, as recommended by the engineer.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as read?
Seven.
Mr. McPhillips, a second.
What's that?
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion? I just have a couple of comments. I'm glad to see Pierce Aluminum's finally wrapped up. That was a nice, nice development. Kept some nice jobs here. And Home to Suites, we'll talk about that under your.
Okay.
Report. Okay. Now, there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the Board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is the finance report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the transfers and bills list before you in your packet. I would ask that you approve the supplemental bill list dated September twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. The bill list dated October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of three million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and one dollars and forty-two cents, as well as the September transfers.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, a second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up is September financial statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are still tracking relatively on budget. Of course, that means, uh, a one-point-six-million-dollar deficit. As we get closer to the end of the year, I'll be able to provide some updated numbers, um, on what the actual deficit is, is projected at. One thing I did find a little bit curious, our earned income tax, uh, is relatively stable. I say it's curious, 'cause I would've expected it to tick up a little bit as, as wages, uh, have been going up in the area, uh, but we're not seeing that yet. It could be a timing issue, um, or other issues involved, but at, at least it's stable. It's not, uh, it's on budget. Uh, the golf course, as I've been constantly telling you, uh, has been impacted by the extremely wet weather we've been having all throughout the spring and summer, but I do believe they're doing, uh, fairly well. We're kind of calling this rebuilding year, as they go ahead and make bar improvements, restaurant improvements, other facility improvements. They, uh, have still had quite a few outings. They've had more outings than last year. Uh, so the revenue, um, has been holding the, although the golfing out, uh, number of rounds is down, the driving range is up considerably, so there are certain positive elements, uh, to that. The cable, I just want to call attention to another thing. Um, the cable TV franchise fee is coming in a little under budget, and I believe that's a trend that we're gonna continue to see as more and more people are simply ditching cable, and they're going just full internet, um, and using different providers for that. Uh, when they do that, uh, we do not get any, uh, franchise fees for that, so, uh, that's an ongoing trend, and I would expect that, uh, to continue. Uh, the last thing I'll point out is on the revenue side, uh, building permits, uh, have already exceeded their revenue target for two thousand eighteen, so that's a little bit of good news, uh, so we, uh, hopefully will make up, uh, some additional, uh, monies there.
Okay. All right. Anyone have anything on the financial report from Mr. Schuster?
With the, uh, franchise fees. Now, the franchise fees were originally instituted as part of a payment to the township, and correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I could be dead wrong about this, uh, for, for access to the right-of-way, to the, to the poles, to the transmission, be able to transmit their cable signals throughout the community. But internet is, is exempted from, from such agreements?
I believe you're correct, 'cause I don't know of anyone charging internet franchise fee. It might, it might be covered, uh, fiber optics might be covered a different way, but I don't, I don't a hundred percent know the answer to that.
And I just thought of it in the moment you said it.
It's been carried around in Congress for, for a few years now. It's been kicked around.
Because I, I'm moving to that point. I, I, I think at my house, we stream things much more than we watch live TV anymore. It's only a matter of time. So, uh, I just, I just wanted to ask the question. I don't have a particular solution to that at the time, but thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Schuster. Next up, we're gonna go to unfinished business. Consider the appointment of Dunlop and Associates to audit the township's books for the years two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand and twenty. Mr. Schuster, you wanna give a description of that before we take action on it?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Board did authorize us to go out and issue an RFP. Our agreement with Dunlop had expired, so it was appropriate to go out for, for bid. The bid was issued for a three-year agreement with an option for renewal for two additional years. Um, the bids came in, uh, we had, uh, uh, was it five? I believe five bidders come in. We, the low bid, uh, was actually disqualified because they did not meet, uh, the requirements issued in the bid specs. The next three bidders were incredibly close. They were within hundreds of dollars of each other. Um, although Dunlop was not the lowest bid, it is the staff's recommendation to go with Dunlop. The reason is, we are very comfortable with them. We think they've done a very good job, and we feel that having the change, the upheaval of introducing a new firm to the township and trying to iron out all the, all the kinks that inevitably occur, is not worth saving a few hundred dollars. So that is our recommendation.
And Dunlop, in my experience, has always been very effective. So I'm, I'm gonna ask for a motion to appoint Dunlop.
Second.
Uh.
Oh, you had a motion first, sorry.
Second.
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any discussion? No, any from the public? I see none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Did you notify Dunlop that they've been reappointed?
Absolutely. We'll notify them, and just so you know, uh, Dunlop recently announced that they're merging with another firm, Seats Leatherment and Cold, uh, but the team that they use will remain intact for us.
Okay, same.
That, that's not changing.
I know they send the same team here, here in, here out. They know our finance department. They know our books. They just.
And that's what we're interested in, more the team than the actual firm.
Right, they know how to navigate through our audit.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, item B is the nineteen, two thousand nineteen proposed budget. I put it on tonight's agenda simply for discussion. I know we had a budget workshop, and I know, you know, the public's had a little more time to digest, and they'll have more time to digest than the Board, and I just want to put it off. There's any further discussion. We're not gonna take any action, but if any further discussion, you know, now's the, now's the time.
I'll be interested in, if there's any further public comment.
Yes, I mean, is anyone from, I know the Budget Committee's here, and I welcome any, I, this is a tremendous memorandum, by the way, that you prepared for us with your recommendations and suggestions. Um, and I'd love to give you some time. Ken, Ken Hayes, the Chairman of the Budget Committee's here. Some time, if you'd like to get up and address the Board, and if this is available to the public.
If the public would like to see it, yeah.
This, this memorandum from the Budget Committee is available to the public as well, with recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ken Hayes, Fifty Lingo Drive. Uh, I'd like to thank the other members of the committee for all the work we put in. It was, it was quite an eye-opener, as I said before.
Yeah.
Um, I think what we put in the memo, both memos, I think is pretty self-explanatory. I don't really have any, much more to add, other than, um.
I think you guys did a tremendous job of cramming. You know, we formed this committee on, on the fly, and you guys met and met.
There wasn't much time, and we started in May, May twenty-ninth, actually, the end of May. So, um, you know, it was a crash course in, in the township finances, so.
I mean, I know Paul Luff has, has experience on the Budget Committee in the past in Warminster, so Paul was pretty familiar with what you were looking at here.
Yeah, it was, it was, um, like I said, it was quite an experience and, uh, and education, and, um, you know, I, I, if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to, to bring anyone up here to answer, or answer myself, but, uh, other than that, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, you have options, you have, the recommendations are based in Mr. Schuster's proposed budget. They're not.
Right.
Anything new.
Which is up on the township website, available to the public as well, the proposed budget.
Yep, that's, that's it. I want to just thank everyone again, and, um, and thank you guys for, uh, selecting us.
We appreciate you taking time out of your house in the evening and taking a lot of homework home.
There was.
Because I, honestly, it took me, it took me a long time being a Board Member to understand the ins and outs of municipal.
Yeah, you know, and you hear, you hear a lot of comments about how simple it should be.
And it's not that simple.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not simple at all, no. There's, there's a, there's a lot of components, there's a lot of, uh, nuances. There's just a lot going on in, in the municipal government, and, um, you know.
And we're, and we're a fairly large municipality. We have a lot of employees, we have a lot of pension costs, healthcare costs that.
Yes.
That we, the taxpayers, that have to shoulder.
It's time to, uh.
Time to shoulder it.
Meet your, uh, meet your obligations, right?
Right, exactly. But thank you, Kenny. We, we look forward to your input.
My pleasure, thank you.
Your future input as well. And thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So moving forward, what, what's the timeline look like? We have a preliminary budget that'll be?
So, for, first of all, I would, uh, in, hope and, or ask for any guidance that the Board would like to give me tonight, um, in drafting a preliminary budget. Um, the next event, uh, could potentially be November first. If you would like to hold another budget workshop, we could have department heads out again, if you want to do any more due diligence on that. If you don't feel that's necessary, of course, we don't have to do that, but we would be looking to, uh, adopt a preliminary budget on November fifteenth, uh, put the appropriate notices out there, and have final adoption at your meeting in December.
Which will be the third week of December.
Third week of December.
Second meeting in December.
Correct. As far as the budget work, the second workshop, I personally don't feel the need. If the Board feels inclined, we certainly can, can have another one. I mean, we had one two weeks ago. It's been up, it's, the budget, proposed budget is on the website. The Township Manager is available to the public. We're available to the public.
I think it was the first workshop that was ever televised.
We televised it purposely, so the public could see, and we ran it, ran it, ran it.
And it's on YouTube.
Right.
I, I tend to agree with you, Mr. McKee. I would, normally, I'd say have the meeting, uh, but quite honestly, would, I just, uh, just, outside of the, the individuals here this evening, and at that workshop meeting, we, I just haven't seen the engagement beyond. I think if we, we drag all the department heads out here, I just, you know, I think if we continue to engage people through different medias, uh, mediums, online, uh, other ways, um, that, you know, the crux, if we have too many meetings, you, you dilute what's going on. If we know we're gonna be talking about a proposed budget on November fifteenth, that's a date people can circle. If they want to chime in, then they can.
Does the public have any comment? You know, I just wanted to leave it on the agenda to leave it wide open for any, any discussion. Well, I guess, I guess the consensus is that we're not gonna have another workshop then, but we're, we are available. I mean, you're available, staff's available to the public. And this memorandum from the Budget Committee is available to the public, either with several really good recommendations that we are, that we're, we're gonna follow. Okay.
All right. Um, if there is no further guidance from the Board, um, what I will be doing is, uh, taking the Township Manager proposed budget, uh, and turning that into a preliminary budget. The only changes that will be made, that I foresee right now, is we have gotten some updated insurance numbers. Uh, we'll be inputting those insurance numbers. We'll be inputting those insurance numbers, and I'll explain that, of course, when we do the preliminary...
Good or bad?
They're good.
Oh, good.
It's not life-changing good, but when I construct the budget, we always construct with a worst-case scenario. And we put in a 10% increase for health insurance, and it came in lower than that. We, you know, so there is going to be, you know, some change in the budget, but not, I would call, life-altering. It's not going to, it's not going to change the decision that you have to make. So in the absence of further guidance, I will prepare that preliminary budget with those insurance changes for the November 15th meeting. Yeah, the only, the only thing I would caution, you, of course, can change the preliminary budget at that meeting. It just becomes a little bit difficult to do that on the fly. If you want to make lots of changes, we, you know, tip, I would request that you give me some time to make sure we get the numbers correct. If you're just going to make one big change, I might be able to do the math right there and do everything appropriately. But any guidance you have in the meantime, even if you're thinking about proposing a change, I would appreciate a heads-up, just so I can have that prepared and ready to go.
And we, as board members, have perfect opportunity between now and November to sit with the township manager and staff and go over things again and again and again.
Procedural issue, so if we, if we move forward with a, with a proposal that, that requires any court intervention, that would, that would take place, that discussion and possible, would take place in November at that meeting, yes?
Correct, the advice that I have received from the solicitor's office is that if you do intend to go above the 14 mil cap on the general fund, which of course this proposes, that they would request authorization at the November meeting to petition the court and submit the preliminary budget as part of the documentation.
Correct.
And, and can you just, I was having this discussion earlier today, and I don't think it's going to occur in this board, but, but say we, somebody was absent, we're, if we're 2-2, if we're deadlock, what are our legal requirements for us to pass a, a budget legally? We have to have one by December 31, right?
Yes, you're required to.
Yeah, so...
You need 30 days to advertise the proposed preliminary budget.
I'm not sure if it's 30 days, or it might be 20.
20 days, is it, Frank?
Well, I don't know, I don't know the exact, I have a, I have a schedule back in the office, I'll, I'll bring it.
I believe, I'm pretty sure it's less than 30 days.
All right, so we're, we're on a compressed timeframe, once we get to November 15th, we are pretty much, we are...
And we are every year.
Of course. But I want, I want people to understand that, like, if, if, if you do have reservations or questions or anything, the next couple of weeks is the time to really bring the...
And for those just tuning in, our proposed budget does have a significant tax increase, which takes us over the millage as prescribed in the general fund, which we would need an approval from the court to do.
So, yeah, it's, it's just a matter of, I, I want to be able to understand and explain to people what happens if you don't do this. Like, you know, I, I know that you have some experience with townships not complying with...
A different township, yes, I did have a 2-2 vote, which precipitated months of other issues, but yes.
Right, and I don't, that's why I was loathe to bring it up, but...
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that, that we have a legal obligation to pass one by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. With a balanced budget, too. Imagine, with a balanced budget, too, imagine that. Okay, all right, I mean, if there's any other discussion, if not, I'm going to move on. Okay, so we're, we're not going to have a second workshop? Proposed budget's up on the website, this memorandum's available to the public as well.
Up on the website.
You know what, why don't you? That would, that would be great.
Yep.
All right, would you, Ken? Okay, great, awesome. Okay. Move on now to new business, which is consider authorization to advertise duty tow bid, 2018-10, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something a little bit different than we've done in the past. It's a, a new way of doing a particular activity. As you, you're probably aware, we have an ordinance in place right now in which towing companies can apply and pay a fee, I believe it's $500 a year, to be on our duty tow list. So whenever there's an accident or a need for police to call out for a tow truck, they have this rotation that, that, that takes place. And they will go ahead and tow the car, they will go and store it, and there's obviously fees associated with that. We are proposing going to a single duty tow hauler, and we're doing that for two reasons. The first reason is financial. As you know, we have financial issues, and I want to look at every single opportunity that we can to increase the amount of revenue coming in. We believe if we give this as a sole contract, that is worth a substantial amount of money. How much it's worth, I, I couldn't tell you, that's part of the bidding process, and, and we would find out. So the first reason for doing this is financial. The second reason is just for ease of operations. And the chief, if you wanted to, could speak a little bit more on this, it would just be easier to have a single duty tow hauler, one company that's responsible for responding to all the calls that occur. So this would be to authorize the advertisement of that bid. If we move forward with the bid and you award the bid, you would also have to change the ordinance. So the schedule, if you decide to move forward, would be to authorize advertisement today. We would issue the bid, you would au, I'm sorry, you would, you would authorize the bid advertisement today. Then, at the November meeting, while the bid is still open, you would authorize the advertisement of the updated ordinance. And if everything works out the way we want it to, then in December, you would approve both, or you would award the bid as well as approve the updated ordinance.
Does everybody get that? Okay. And you've met with the tow haulers?
I have met with the tow haulers, explained the process, answered questions. It was actually a little bit of unusual step, because normally, we issue the bid, then have a, a pre-bid meeting, or, you know, in this case, we had a pre-pre-bid meeting. They provided a good deal of feedback. We incorporated the, much of the feedback, some of the things that they were saying were quite reasonable. Since it's the first time we were doing this, they had good feedback, so we incorporated that. We anticipate with your approval, issuing that bid tomorrow, there would be a second mandatory pre-bid meeting. And they'd have more opportunity to give any more feedback if they feel that was necessary. So yes, we've met with them, we will meet with them again.
Okay, so this is, this, let me, I'll ask for a motion before we have the discussion. It's our motion, authorize the advertisement of duty tow bid 2018-10.
So moved.
Mr. McPhillips, is there a second? Mr. Monroe? Can I open it up to discussion, is there a discussion from the board?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's had some questions. I know that you met with the duty tow guys, I appreciate that. What was the final, and you have to forgive me, work was crazy today, what was the final decision that was made in terms of the radius in which a bidder could...
Yeah.
A question.
So the revised bid, originally, I believe, had four miles out of the border. We revised that down to one mile.
Okay. Exactly, I think we're all in agreement that we'd like to see this go to a local company. I, I do not, I do not want to see this go outside of Warminster, and I've told you that 110 times.
I mean, if the board would like, you can go ahead and just say it has to be within Warminster. Part of what my job is to make sure we have, you know, more bidders.
Right.
You know, to go ahead and have a competitive process. I believe that there is at least one bidder out there that if you move from one mile down to zero miles, you would preclude that bidder, but I believe there'd be four, at least four other bidders in the process.
I don't want, is there anybody else having anything on the, the radius before I go on?
The only question I have is, just from personal experience prior to, before I became a supervisor, is about the language in our township ordinance with respected duty toes, and the relationship that happens after the car is towed. What kind of, is there any kind of language in there with respect to that? So I'll just give you an example. So the experience I had was someone that was drinking and driving slammed into my parked car, hence why I now have an expanded drive one. And pretty much crushed it, and the duty tow came along and took it. And then, within a day or two, they were pretty much ready to start work, and I was like, well, wait a minute. And their argument was, was that if they towed it, they get to do the work on it, and I corrected them on that.
Yes.
But what, do we have any language spelling that out one way or the other?
Well, there's no language that says they can't do it, but no one can work on your car without authorization. You know, and I don't even think we would be legally, I, I don't think we could craft an ordinance that would give them that...
Exclusive rights to repair vehicles.
No, I wouldn't, I would want to do the opposite. I would, you know, I want to make sure that that's clear.
So, so everything in the, where we are currently, or the current ordinance in our current system, and in the future system, if the car is towed, yes, there's going to be towing fees, yes, there's going to be storage fees, but they have no right to work on your car unless you authorize it.
Okay, just to be clear, too, this was like 10 years ago, so it's probably not anybody...
Probably ran into a shady...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I took care of it.
But yeah, that is, that is definitely not something that they have the right to do. This is only towing.
Right, so, Mr. Monroe, did you have anything else I didn't want to...
No, no.
Sorry. So, yeah, I, I want to, of course, keep as much business in Warminster as possible. The one mile is, is about as far as I, I would go on it, but I also don't want to mislead. I, I still have reservations about changing the ordinance at all, so I don't want to sit here and say, let's get it down to one or zero, and then I'm going to vote against it. I don't want to mislead you in that fashion. Is, is there, and I know this is asking perhaps a question that you can't answer at this time, but do we have any idea the, you know, I, I understand from the standpoint of administrating the program and, and the possible benefits that you mentioned before. In terms of the financial benefits, is there any estimate on what kind of difference in, in, in revenue you would see, we would see from, from such a change?
Well, right now, I believe we have four haulers paying $500 a year, so that'd be $2,000. So I believe, and please don't quote me on this, that the, the city of Allentown, totally different animal than us.
Of course.
You know, I believe they gets a few hundred thousand for this exclusive right. I do not expect that here, but I believe that having the exclusive towing rights is valuable. But I, I really, now, if the bids came in and the highest bid was, you know, $5,000, we'd probably sit here and say, you know, maybe this just isn't worth it. You'd always have that option.
Right.
And I, I'm sorry, I just, I really don't have anything to go by.
Right, no, that's, I, I was asking a tough question, I knew that.
We've had the discussion internally that if we get to the end of this process in December, and it's just not right, we, we can waive it off till next year and just go back to the four haulers for next year, even extend them for a year so they don't have to go through this process.
Correct, correct, and also, the bid itself is only for one year with an option to extend another year. And I purposely did that in case there are issues, in case you do decide to make this change in 2019, it just says, hey, this isn't working. And we decide for 2020 to go back to the old way, we're not hooking ourselves into a long-term contract here. So that's why it's structured for only one year, with an option for another year, if you would like.
Is, is there a language to protect us in the, in case of the need to separate?
Yeah, there's the standard language in there, there's a bond in place for non-performance, yes.
I think, I mean, I've, I've read the documents, they're pretty, pretty detailed.
So there's a pre-bid meeting, and how many showed up for it?
Four, four companies, yes.
Was Chief Donnelly there?
Yes.
Excuse me, okay. I, I know this board makes a decision, but I'm interested in Chief, you know, your opinion, Chief, since you'll be working with them. Not now, I'm saying, but when the time comes.
The chief is not shy about giving his opinion.
Yes. I voiced what I wanted to say.
Well, there's a motion in a second, but it's open for discussion, I mean, if the public has any input, yeah, please, John, please. And this is just to advertise, this isn't...
Yeah, I understand. I just have, just one question, as a resident in Warminster, and also one of your tow haulers.
Put your name and address.
Yeah, okay, John Priobel, 674 Joseph Avenue, Warminster, PA. Looking at it in the financial end of it, and I understand why you're going that way, I would say, yes, if you were going that way, that's what you'd have to do. The other consideration I think you're overlooking is the fact that if you take a hauler that's a mile outside of Warminster Township, and he does not have a Burkeheimer registered to Warminster Township, the funds that are created with the towing and the storage that would normally go on a Warminster Burkeheimer, and the funds, the, your, your tax for that would then come back to the township on the, on the backside as well. So if you take that and say the guy's outside the township and you award him the towing, the Burkeheimer money that would come from the revenue from the removal of the cars from the Warminster Township side would go to another township, and I don't think that's correct. And I think you guys should got to keep it in the township and work with it from there. If you put it outside, you're losing your Burkeheimer money, and that's not why we're here. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, please.
So first of all, I have to, you know, no offense, obviously, as a potential bidder in Warminster, has a vested interest, you know, in, in keeping it inside the township. What he says is correct, but if you were to apply that theory to everything, then everything you bid would only be within, with companies within the township. So I don't disagree with what he's saying, it's just, you know, it, it's impossible to tell how much money we might be missing out on from a tax perspective versus how much additional money we might get from a bidder that has the highest bid, that might be within that one mile radius.
Can I ask a question? And I think we've discussed this already, if someone from out of town comes in with, with a bid, do we have the right to send out for rebid if we don't find them?
You always have the right to rebid.
Right, so if we have some...
You have the right to reject all the bids.
Comes in from out of town, and we say, you know, we really want this.
But, but I would also say that if, if that really is your position now, then I would ask that you just go ahead and revise the motion to revise the bid and remove, that you say it has to be within Warminster, with the understanding that you'll be limiting the pool of, of potential bidders, but you can certainly do that.
I mean, I've expressed my opinion multiple times, that I, I feel that it should be someone with, within Warminster. I do, I, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I've expressed my opinion multiple times, that I...
Is there an additional benefit to the police department in order to have them within the township? Time response and things of that nature, but...
Well, our, the specifications stand, I believe it's a 20-minute response time. I don't care where they're coming from, they have to be there within 20 minutes. And if they don't, they're in violation of the contract. So that's what, that's what I put in the category of their problem, not, not our problem. Now, if someone is without, outside the township, could that put them in more danger of violating that 20-minute standard? Yeah.
Right.
Anyone else have any thoughts?
Just because, I mean, that, that does tie up a cop, you know, on the street, so, and the longer they are out there, that means that less officers are able to respond.
But if we did have a vendor which is outside the township and repeatedly violated that 20-minute standard, they would lose the contract. We would not just, we would not let that happen. So it's, it's really up to you, I would just, if you are, if you are leaning towards keeping it within Warminster, I would just say make the change right now.
How are we, what's the consensus? I mean, I know we have a motion open here, but...
Look, I mean, I have a preference to keep it in the township, but at the same time, I mean, I want to see what kind of, I mean, everything's apples to apples until you put everything next to each other. And I would rather see that...
What's out there.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, let me, let me just say this, and Greg has given some, some thought as to, as to why he's recommended what he has. If the board is going to make a decision, you always have the right to reject all bids, and, and you can then rebid the matter. But it should be done for a proper purpose. It shouldn't be done just to see whether someone comes in as the low bid and then do something to sort of, to exclude that person the next time around when, when the bid comes. So I, I would say we would have a pretty good case in court, because generally, it is the case that, that you can reject the bids and you can, you could come back and, and rebid the matter. But if, if it's determined that there's an allegation of a, of an improper motive, and I don't mean people making money or anything like that, I mean improper motive as, as in excluding a given bidder when that decision could have been made upfront, and you gave them an all, an opportunity for a uniform bidding standard, and one of them won, and the only reason to exclude them is for something that wasn't originally contained in the standards, you may have some difficulty...
Doesn't look good.
And it's a, and it's a problem. Okay, so if, if you, if you want to relegate your bidding process to your residents only, certainly can do that.
By residents, businesses.
I'm sorry, I mean, resident businesses, excuse me. The, if you, if you want to relegate it to that only, then you certainly can do that, as Greg indicated. I would suggest to you that you might want to do that upfront, because you don't want to be, you, you don't want to be sued over something like this.
I don't have an issue with that, keeping it more, I mean, what's the average response time? Do we know that?
Well, they're responsible for doing it within 20 minutes right now, and I haven't heard anything from the chief indicating that there's any significant issues with that.
Warminster's 10 square miles, somewhere within Warminster, they're going to get there within 20 minutes.
And we, we know that we have four qualified bidders right now, because they're four... And we, we know that we have four qualified bidders right now, because there are four people, well, three, but there's a fourth that are doing.
So, right now, we're basically, by taking that method, we'd be excluding one from the process.
Potentially, potentially. Well, there, there is one that is within a mile radius that has been in contact with us, they did not attend that pre-bid meeting, which was not mandatory.
They're not a current hauler.
They're not a current hauler, so they, they expressed an interest. I don't know if they would bid or, or not bid.
Man, I like to, you know, you guys are the professionals, so I'd like to, you know, I know that your, your gut was to go full out and you're, you're kind of recommending some semblance of caution. I mean, my, my, again, my, my take on it is, is that if I took issue with someone that was a mile down the roadway, say, out, you know, east down straight road, we all know what the traffic's like on a straight road at five o'clock in the afternoon, you know, I bet, I would, I would certainly take that into consideration. Would we get sued over it? I, I, I don't know.
My point is, you, as far as the distance issue is concerned, you have the same information tonight as you'll have it sometime in the future after a bid comes in, so it would, it may be clear to someone else that it was done for the purpose of excluding somebody as opposed to having a uniform bidding standard for all.
Ah, I see what you're saying.
So, you know, so if, if you're going to make that decision-
Do it tonight.
That you want to limit it to a certain geographic area, my recommendation is do it tonight.
I understand.
And just a side note, as far as the, the one mile, I mean, how was that established? That if you start changing that at a future time, I'm just a little side note, but how that, why one mile, why not two, why not four? You know, where, where's that decision made? But if you do that later, another date, then, you know-
I've said all along, and I'm sticking to my story, I'd like to see it in Warmminster. We have capable haulers in Warmminster.
How many are there in Warmminster?
Well, we, we have at least four that we believe are going to bid.
I mean, it's, it's, knowing that I, I generally oppose the change, however, if, if it's going to pass, I'd rather see it at, at Warmminster-based businesses, but, you know, it's, it's, I, I want to be clear that I would, I, I, my, my, my concerns about it are primarily based on risk versus reward in terms of, well, we might get more money, but what's going to be the impact, not, you know, the impact on, on these Warmminster-based businesses and their employees, losing rep, there's, there's a whole lot of things where I just, I'm not comfortable yet with, with saying yes, but if, if, if this is something that will be happening, I would, I would prefer to see it as, as Warmminster only. It sounds like we have a consensus to amend, to amend the, the motion. So I got to, I have to ask Mr. Vardel how to proceed with amending the motion.
You can, you can, the, the motion currently is consider authorization to advertise duty, duty tow bid, and of course, you, you have the bid in front of you, you can amend that to say, consider authorization to advertise duty tow bid with modification that bidders are limited to those having businesses within the confines of Warmminster Township.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, if someone has a business, but could they, if they have a yard outside of Warmminster, where are we at then? I mean, when we say in Warmminster, we mean the business and a yard in Warmminster.
And not a P.O. box.
Correct. You know, I, I think if you made that motion, I am clear on your intent.
Yeah.
We would make sure that is changed accordingly.
We'll, we'll, we'll take that as the, as the modified motion and, and that you, that we understand that we want not only the, the business to be here, but also the yard to which the vehicles will be towed.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second, Mr. Phillips?
And I'm, I'm going to open it up to discussion, there's a, there's a motion in a second, right? Yeah, I just, I just wanted to talk to the chief for a second.
Okay, before we take action?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Do I need to take a recess?
We take a brief recess?
There's a motion in a second, so we know where we're picking up.
Yeah.
Okay, five-minute recess.
Thank you.
But they're all required to do a 20-minute response time regardless, does-
20 minutes, 20 minutes. Don't, I don't care what the excuses, 20, 20 minutes.
How we got here was that if we went with the motion that we had, correct me if I'm wrong, we would technically be disqualifying one, possibly two of our current haulers.
I believe that's correct, yes.
And I, I don't want to disqualify people that are our current haulers, I, I don't. They've been haulers here, they've serviced the township, they, they run businesses here. I don't, I don't want to disqualify current haulers, I just don't, I don't think it's fair, I just don't, that's my opinion and I-
What's that, what is, because now I got to ask the specific.
Sure, yeah.
What is the language for the violation of the 20-minute rule? What are the steps that we take if they violate it, if they violate it multiple times?
Okay.
Now, they will be required to have a yard here, correct, and an office, and an office here.
So, give me a minute. Under section 2.10 penalties, one of the four qualifying factors for a penalty is, quote, "Failure to respond to a call for towing services within 20 minutes except upon showing exigent circumstances." Below that-
Response here an excellent 8666.
All right. The penalties shall be as follows, for number one, each separate offense is $100 per occurrence, the second offense within one month of a violation is $300 per occurrence, the third offense within one month of a violation is $500 per occurrence. Obviously, if it becomes more prevalent than that, we have the right to go ahead and cancel the contract.
But that, the, the language is clearly in there?
Yes.
Okay.
For non-performance, yeah.
Right, so, so the standard is, is what, so four violations within a month or three?
Well, that's the number of, that's to get those penalties, those monetary penalties. I don't think there's actually a specific number, that if you hit that number, the contract's automatically canceled. It's more if it just keeps occurring over time and we've made a judgment that you're not adhering to the bid specifications, you're not fulfilling your obligations under the, the contract, it'll be canceled.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that, I mean, now is the opportunity that we have in order to be able to tackle that issue. If we can firm that language up, you know, if you, Frank, look at it and you feel that it can be firmed up at all, I mean, I would recommend that we do then, and I'm completely on board.
Come on up, John.
Yeah, I'm going to make it a little difficult for you guys. John Priobal, 674 Joseph Avenue, Warmminster, PA. I had the pleasure to talk to our township zoning officer about a property I was looking to purchase at 40 York Road, which is the Markovich Building. I asked him if I could open a towing and storage facility at that location and make that the main office for my towing operations. I was told I was not allowed to do that because our zoning codes does not provide for any towing or storage facility in the township. It only provides for a mechanical and towing to be accommodated by it. I looked through all the zoning codes with, with it, with the dealer code for, I think it's 41, 40, there's 31, I think it is, don't have the thing in front of me, but of course, we don't have him here to comment on it or to let you know, but he would probably be the guy to do it. As far as I understood, I wasn't able to do that without having an automotive-related business attached to the towing side of it. I couldn't just come in and say I wanted to open a towing and storage facility, I had to have an automotive repair, whether it was a dealership or auto body or auto repair, and towing was secondary. And there's quite a bit of language as to the storage of the vehicles, so you need to look at it.
The, the gentleman may, may well be right, if you, if you don't have the, the ability to have a towing facility other than in conjunction with something else, that may be a problem in your ordinance. It may also be the case, though, that they were calling out a specific zoning district that this property was located in.
C1 district.
And it may very well be in, in that district, that the restriction is, is such that if you don't have the one use, you can't have the second. That may, that may only apply to the C1 district. I'm not, I'm not saying it does or it doesn't, I'm just saying I would have to take a look at the ordinance to see, but that, that's oftentimes-
When you go down through the list of everything that the township puts into the ordinance, okay, and what each section is, there is nothing that says towing and storage, period. It just says automotive, repair, you know, dealer, that kind of stuff. I, I expressed, I told, I talked to a few people about it, it's something you got to look at, whether you, you want to go around this and do it, that, that's your decision, I'm not going to tell you or hold you up on it, I'm just telling you that it's a, it's a deficiency within the code.
And what, and what I'm, what I'm saying to you is you may well be right, but I have not reviewed the code for that purpose, and I will do so-
You will.
And come out, and, and it may, may very well be that that limitation exists in a specific zoning district, it may be, as you suggested, it exists throughout the entire ordinance, and, and I don't know that yet.
Yeah, well, I'm not a lawyer, but I read it enough times to understood it, okay?
And, and sometimes that's, that's, that's just as good.
Okay.
So that, that doesn't hold us up from taking action tonight?
I, I-
Just for advertisement.
I would say that it would not hold you up from, from taking action tonight, we'll take a look at that, Greg and I'll take a look at that first thing.
Okay, because we're going to have to rework the ordinance anyway once-
Well, that would be, that would be the, he's talking about the zoning ordinance, so that'd be a-
But that'll come into play.
We don't know, we have, we have to look at it, yeah.
Yeah, please, please.
Yeah, please, please.
Mark Dunnett, Modern Auto Body, 100 York Road, evening. I have a lot of concerns about the proposed changes to this contract. I've been personally running a truck in this township, providing service to Warminster's duty tow, for 45 years personally. There's a lot to it. You guys just plain don't understand the half of what goes on, the time element, the problems, the troubles. Not only that, you say you have four bidders and you're concerned to keep it here in Warminster Township. My concern is, for the gain you're gonna get from the one bid, what happens to the loss of the jobs for the people that I now employ, even my business? It's gonna put a hurt on my business. I've been doing this, I've been doing this for 45 years, affording a service to Warminster Township, and it's a dedicated service. It's interrupted my life, most certainly. I've had to cover the trucks hours, and hours when I couldn't find employees to do it. It's a tough world out there, that they get people to work. So, it's my contract, I fill it, whether it's 2:00 in the morning, and the chief of witnesses, I've seen him at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, and say, "What are you doing here?" I said, "I'm here to do the job," and that's the way it is. But my concern is, you're putting this out for a bid so that there's one winner. You right now have a gift with the four towers you have on this roster. They all perform their duties. There may be one or two exceptions, but what do they do now when that one guy, because you guys got a pile of money, which I totally understand your monetary situation, what do you tell those people that don't have a job anymore, you know, come January? You know, the tax base, your taxpayer in town, it should be morally more respected than it really is. To throw this around with just a one-off proposal, I think is crazy. And may I comment? Personally, I've been in the experience. This 20-minute thing might work for 80% of the time. I personally had experienced this year, not so long ago, a truck took down a telephone pole. I got called to the scene, but Pico wouldn't let me do it. They called me off. They said, you know, "Wires are too hot and stuff, you gotta come back." In the meantime, on the way back, they called me for a two-car accident on Jacksonville Road. Went back and responded to that. I called a second truck out to handle the two cars to get them out. They called me for an accident on Bristol Road. I tried to get down Bristol Road. I called the dispatcher three times to put her aware that I'm in traffic with 500 cars in front of me. There's no way I'm gonna get to you within a half an hour. So, it's not realistic on times. Yes, it's a neat thing to go and guideline for a penalty, but it's more of a hurt than it is a penalty because you're trying to serve the contract, and you can't get there. It's an impossibility. So, that's a concern of mine as well, as well as a whole gamut of things that should be looked at. I spent a lot of time constructing this duty tow roster with shops in town on an equitable rotation. As long as you met the specs, as long as you qualified for it, you were allowed to be on it, unless there was a reason, you know, that I didn't know about, you didn't qualify. I think it's improper to X-nay people by this bid, especially to people that are ongoing right now. Precedence has been set for you guys. And like I say, this is a gift you have because I personally know what painted is to actually man and operate this contract. There were good times, and now it's cut down dramatically. The police department, because of their not wanting to write accident reports, it's time-consuming, I understand that, they pulled the cars off into private property without permission. The motor vehicle code still applies to all vehicles that are damaged. They should be towed for the safety precautions. There has to be better, what shall I say, discretion at an accident scene. The officer on the scene is the authority on the scene. If he allows you to operate the car, and the car gets involved in another accident, we've got a problem. I've gone through this with four chiefs. We had the DUIs. The DUI, basically, the DUI tow, shall I say, which we used to do four or five, there's, I don't think there's as many drinkers as there used to be, but we used to tow quite a few cars on the weekend. And it actually was a safety net for the township because when the car would get impounded because of the DUI, the guy had to wait till Monday morning to get his car back. The way it reads now, you could go back in the car after you were in with a set of keys and go out and kill somebody. So, that's safety, and that's all going now too, because regulations or whatever, I don't know, but that's just the way it goes down. We're not towing as many cars. There isn't a discretionary thing with the cars on the scene for traffic control. If there were a better discretion on the scene at an accident, that the car be towed immediately to get the traffic moving, and you have that guy on call, you're talking about this 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, or seven, yeah, seven days a week, 24 hours, to have somebody on call. That would work if you used it, but you don't use it in this town. This is a horse-and-buggy town. This is not Allentown. It's not New York. But it is important to get the highway back open again so traffic can move, and that's the whole premise. That's why we come out to do this. So, that's my concerns. I mean, there's a myriad of things I could tell you about, but there's a bigger depth to this than you guys can appreciate. You know, you may have one instance where you got towed or something, but I could help fill in the blanks and stuff, but I think it's very unfair that you're gonna narrow it down to one bidder, because these guys are out there now, they've built their businesses, as well as myself, around that towing contract, whether it be mechanical, bodywork, or whatever. They're all proceeds, it's my living. That's all. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just gotta respond to the one comment pertaining to police officers and when they tow and when they don't tow, and things of that nature. I mean, it is, I mean, under normal experience, it's a typical, it's up to the individual officer to decide what's best for the traffic, what's best for the vehicle owner, or, you know, so if it can be pushed off to the side and clear up the roadway and what's quick, and if they use their private tow, I mean, it ultimately comes down to those factors, and the discretion of the officer, I think, is very paramount. So, I, under normal circumstances, I have no problem with the way officers handle those issues.
Anyone else have anything before we take another crack at crafting another motion? Yeah, I'm gonna give it to Mr. Bartle one more time.
Well, I think the motion that you have is consider authorization to advertised duty tow bid restricted to bidders who will provide the yard to be towed to in Warminster Township. That's what you have suggested thus far. So, Mr. Schuster and I would craft it in that fashion in the morning and have you take a look at it.
Understand what the intent of the board is.
We'd also take a look at the zoning issue that was mentioned by the gentleman who spoke earlier.
Yeah, very important that we have a look at that as well. Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second. I'll second. Any further discussion? Any more from the public? See, now I call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, any opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Preo is opposed, that is 3-1, for advertisement. And as we move forward, I think we might probably hit some more bumps in the road, I would imagine, with going through this process, and you're gonna do another pre-bid meeting.
So, as of right now, we will revise the bid per your instructions, issue it as soon as possible. As with any bids, I would advise you to push off any questions or comments you get from potential bidders to either myself or Mr. Bartle. Potential bidders will have an opportunity to give any further input or ask questions. That's accounted for within the bid. There will also be a mandatory pre-bid meeting to answer any questions and go over things, and then they have a deadline to submit the bids.
All right, and we're doing one with the year extension? If a year goes by and it doesn't work, we can always go back to multiple hauler.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
True.
Okay, next up on tonight's agenda is the Professionals Reports Township Manager, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report in case there are any questions. Tomorrow, I will be participating with a roundtable discussion hosted by Representative Fitzpatrick at Bucks County Community College on the water contamination issues. As you know, you had authorized the trash bid to go out. That is out there right now. We have received quite a bit of feedback from potential bidders. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and we are revising bid, the bid based on feedback received. The process does have a few bumps in the road, but looks like it's going well so far.
What time is that roundtable at Bucks County Community College? I think 3:00 o'clock?
Three to 5:00, I believe, is the...
3:00 PM tomorrow? Any board members are interested in attending?
Yeah. I know I'll be there. I was invited to attend. They also asked if there was any other potential citizen that might be from Warminster that can, you know, speak in some authority, so I did invite Mr. Hayes, who's the chairman of the Environmental Advisory Committee, to show up as well. Just got informed today that they wanted someone for tomorrow, so I didn't have a whole lot of time. And last thing I'd like to mention is, we have adjusted the timing on street road, the traffic lights there, and have done some additional studies. What people should be seeing at some times in some directions is an increase in the speed and flow through street road. The timings have been changed such that you, as you approach street road at an intersection, you may get a little bit of a longer red light to get onto street road, but once you get on there, we're trying to get traffic flowing as quickly as possible. So, we have had some success, and I think some of the travel times in some directions at certain times are down somewhere around 20% to 30%, just from changing the timings, and our traffic engineer did a very good job at looking at that.
Has he taken a look at the NSYNC system that we disabled a few years ago? Has he dug that deep enough yet?
The technology is running right now. So, what we're looking for is more adaptive technology, and if you recall, we got the recent Greenlight Go grant, and we're gonna be installing some of that technology in some of the intersections.
The NSYNC system, has that been reactivated? Are we using parts of that software now?
Yep.
Because it was deactivated a few years ago.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but right now it is being used, but it's kind of like the brain is there, but the eyes and ears are not all there, so...
I'll go back three or four years. I'm sure technology's...
Yeah, so it takes some time to go ahead and upgrade all of that, but we're working for that.
Okay. All right. Solicitors' report, Mr. Bartle?
Yes, thank you. The board has received my written report dated October 18, and there are many matters discussed in that. The trash collection contract update is that we held a mandatory pre-bid conference with township staff and potential bidders, and have issued written responses to questions submitted. Bids are due November 1, 2018. We talked about the duty tow, and I think you've received an update with respect to that this evening. Other than that, the vast majority of issues are the land development zoning issues, which are ongoing. Most of the land development issues require information to be presented by the people who have been approved so that we can complete the land development agreements, and other than that, there are a couple of matters of litigation, and we just updated you with respect to those.
Does anyone have anything for Mr. Bartle? If I do not either, next up, Engineers' report, Mr. Kennert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our October Engineers' Report, and I'm smiling because we have two projects that'll be on your next meeting. One is a waiver, well, actually, both are waiver of land developments, but the one we received today, and our letter went out today for the Gildas Club. I promised to help them out.
That's the one that Mr. Petrowski's volunteered his time on? Oh, good, I'm glad that's moving forward.
And we did as well, I think the rest of staff did as well, so...
And Judy.
They were date-stamped this morning, and the letter was out today, so the Gildas Club will be on your next meeting, November 15, and...
You guys are doing the work pro bono, is that right?
Correct.
Oh, great, thank you. So's Boucher and James, Mr. Schuster just told us. Oh, great, that's really good. Sorry to interrupt you.
The other project that will be scheduled for your November 15 meeting will be the Fuge for modifications of their parking. That's a very minor project. Again, those two, not much to them, but they need a waiver of land development from the board. They will not go to planning commission.
If you're looking for some other pro bono work, we have plenty in the pipeline.
No, not looking. Two other big projects that we're working on, as you know from our last meeting, we received, I think, around seven land development projects all at one time. We're working on the Hartsville Court, 1250 West Bristol Road. That is your modified, we're, the applicant is proposing to modify the stipulate agreement. Staff has met with them. They have a plan that was approved back in 2010 under a stipulate agreement, and they're asking to modify that. So, staff is working on it, it's a very large project. In fact, I don't have the number of homes here, I can't remember.
Where is that?
West Bristol Road.
The Studley, oh, okay, okay.
They did receive approval through the courts, and they've asked to modify the agreement, so...
And that's bounced back and forth for several years?
Make it very clear, it's gonna bounce back and forth for quite a lot longer.
Where is that again?
1250 West Bristol Road.
On the other side of York?
Right by the Shamity Creek.
Okay, so that's the one that butts Long College? That I've gotten multitude of...
There's an old house on the property?
There's an old house. They could not build the plan as they agreed to, pretty much based on environmental constraints on that property. They did not do their due diligence at that time, said they could build this, and they can't. They're coming to this board to ask for relief and to modify a plan. You won't see it until staff gets to a point, I think, where we're probably more comfortable with the plan, and then they'll come, and it's your option to modify that agreement or not, and, you know, they need to work with the staff, we'll come up with...
And you're working with the applicant?
Yes, we had one staff meeting, and we'll go back, probably more engineer back and forth for a while till we can get...
My point is, is there's, I've been hearing, I mean, inquiries, concerns, complaints from the neighbors there, going back, I don't know, I mean, since 2013, maybe even since 2012 pertaining to that property, if I'm, I think it's the right same property.
Appreciate that feedback, and one of the ideas I had, I was gonna talk with Amanda and Greg and Frank, is maybe put them in front of the planning commission, once they get their first initial reviews, get some feedback, flush out anything, and then...
I know there's some wetland in the front part of the property, and there's a lot of issues there.
And I did hear some other rumblings, and I'd hate to go through a lot of engineering detail back and forth, and then all of a sudden the layout changes, so maybe what we'll do is put them on for planning commission. It might be a point where, okay, they heard enough, and they're gonna go back and regroup a little bit. We have some significant issues with the potential, the proposed layout, so that's gonna be coming up. And then the other one that we just received, the revised check set we're trying to expedite for them is the 1270 Burns Road, the Gil Dousher's Farm. I know they're still trying to look to start construction here, weather permitting. We're trying to help expedite that to get this next review done so they can record their plans, and...
Steak and Shake.
November.
Okay.
November.
Not the car wash, I haven't seen any activity over there in a while. They start and stop.
It's taking their time, yeah. You have a lot of projects that start and stop, the smaller mom-and-pop sort of land development projects. We help them get to a point, I think sometimes we even, you know, get them ready and they're not ready, actually go through all the financials and, you know, the contractors and bidding and whatnot, so, or they're trying to do it themselves, so...
And I wanted to thank you and Ms. Zimmerman, that you've rectified that problem with the Burger King entrance off of street road. Wasn't our problem, but was.
And Amanda, I was told it's done.
They're working on it, I saw it written on the other day.
Yeah, we were asking if one of us looked at it before the meeting, but we didn't, so...
Their driveway, going up the driveway, was a bump about this big on the street road. Not our problem, because street road is a pen dot road, but is our problem because our residents are going in and out of it every day.
And I apologize, there was one other, we get a lot of questions, the Hart School. Amanda and I had a meeting with the HOA again, this is our second meeting, just to help transition with the new HOA. I think that went very well. It was a 35-minute meeting. We, with the staff's encouragement, we have the developer working a little closer now with the HOA to wrap up everything. It's a lot for the HOA to take on and understand what they own and what they have to maintain. So, we had that meeting two days ago, and we also are preparing the final punch list. I know they're anxious to wrap that up by the end of the year. They might have to wait to the spring to replant some trees and...
But we're still holding some escrow, so...
Yeah, we will till the very end, but that was encouraging. I talked to the developer today, they understand that there's a couple of things that the HOA would like, and it's a little bit of a negotiation at the end, and I step in and, you know, ask the developer to, once the job's done, something like extending a trail or modifying, you know, a fence or whatnot, so we'll work that out and hopefully have that wrapped up early spring.
I know that at one point, I talked about whether or not they were gonna be connecting that nature trail back through the old nature trail. I did actually walk through it this past week, and everything's connected, and it looks really good.
The actual connection issue was right at the tot lot, where it stopped at the road, and there's a small little section, but due to accessibility issues that should be finished, it was not on the plans. It was part of the LNI accessibility review, and just was an oversight, so I asked them if that would be something they would finish, instead of putting that burden on the HOA.
And of course, I appreciate your work with respect of removing that, the trespass on.
I'm going to be upfront, they will be coming to, they requested to come tonight. I said, "Wait till the job's finished." They're not happy about the outcome of the tot lot and ownership and use of it, and we put that on the back burner. I said, "That is really not my decision," or the staff's. They wish that that would remain private, and they're being advised by their lawyer that it should remain due to risk. I said, "When the job's done, that can be a topic that they discuss with the board or staff." They raised that again two days ago.
They're afraid to remove it.
What? No, they can't. It's part of your approval.
We can amend it.
You can do that. Yes, you can. You can.
Oh, we'll talk about that.
But they can't remove it without your approval.
That's something we can discuss.
Yeah, we'll discuss it. Yeah, sure.
I want to get down to that's the only issue. It's going to be discussed here. They will come, the president said he would come, he wants to introduce himself, um, you know, be a good neighbor, and I think it would be good for him, but, um...
Okay.[1587.21]